謝謝主席。在火警警報響起的情況下，請所有人員接受人員的指示，會議場的位置在Tudor Square。謝謝。
謝謝，阿碧。我現在會去整個室內， 我作為上層階級的理事長， 這些理事長是—— 阿倫。
委員長哈羅·伍德卡克，東特克爾斯街區。
托尼。Pete。
Pete Price，沙耶格林，白石頭區。
Mike。
Mike Chaplin，委員長法薩迪區。
Bernard。
Bernard Little，委員長沃克利區和Brian Homshoe區。
Harry。
謝謝主席，委員長加里·韋德羅夫，沙耶格林，白石頭區。
Roger。
Roger Davison，委員長艾克爾斯爾區。
Barbara。
Barbara Masters，委員長艾克爾斯爾區。
Cliff。
Cliff Woodcraft，委員長富爾伍德區。
謝謝，最後，Bob。
Bob McCann，委員長布特頓區。
謝謝。阿碧，我們有沒有抱怨？
謝謝主席，我們今天有抱怨， 委員長托尼·當寧和他的—— 托尼·當寧和他的替換人—— 我們也抱怨， 委員長Brian Homshoe， 他今天被委員長Bernard Little取代， 我們也抱怨， 尼格·巴沙拉。謝謝。
非常感謝。除了公共和媒體， 我確認了。在你的議程中， 我會通過它們， 頁页页， 為了準確度， 然後我會要求你確定， 他們是正確的記錄。所以第9頁。第10頁。第11頁。和12頁。謝謝。現場訪問是下一个議程， 成員們知道， 我們覺得需要在 Monday 上周進行的任何訪問， 理事長會跟你聯絡時間， 以及團隊總監從何開始。更接近日期。今天的第一項決定 making 的議程， 是樹保育令號 460-20， 特萊霍克，特萊。我會交給， Tinesse 為你介紹報告。謝謝。
非常感謝。樹保育令號 460-20， 特萊霍克， 在27月2022 年發行， 保護一棵木， 這棵木在木屋的後面。你可以找到這個號碼， 在報告的附件 A 中。所以樹，T1， 在木屋的後面， 它附着鄰近土地， 它在附近土地的上方， 與旁邊土地相對立。鄰近土地曾經是特萊霍克農場， 而這塊土地現在正在發展， 已經拆除， 和幾個新建築正在建設。一個是木箱， 在樹的門口， 這個被移除， 為新建築讓路。木屋的主辦人， 在2022年 March 中， 向委員長計劃部門報告。這是關於木箱的毀壞。他說， 可能對樹有害。從此， 對於可能違反計劃條件， 和建設地的影響， 已經規定為保留。結果， 在2022年16月16 日。在訪問期間， 包括保護樹。根據 TPO 許可， 向開發者報告， 由一個保育專家委託， 他也建議樹被 TPO 許可， 加強樹保護， 在這裏， 在2022年1月1 日。樹分數為 14 分， 提供了保護的明確建議。它被認為是為了保護， 一份時溫度測試， 可以在附件 B 中找到。我也看到了一些木屋， 我想在報告中。關於它的保護， 這是棵大木。可以從附近房子看見。可以從特萊霍克公園看見， 關於它的狀況， 一棵大型樹， 在良好狀況， 沒有明顯的缺陷。關於長壽， 我把它視為保守的， 樹的維持時間， 是20到40 年。最後， 它的保育區域。特萊霍克保育區域的評估， 可以在附件 E 中找到， 它指出樹是這個區域的重要特徵。我相信有前委員長的證據， 指出它曾經是一棵路線标记樹， 就是一棵在重要交點處站著， 在景觀中添加的。關於方向， 我無法找到直接的證明， 或歷史關聯。但 nonetheless， 它約 100到150 年。是幾個成熟樹， 現在是公共步道。所以， 我覺得這樣的成熟樹的存在， 是保育區域的自然。最後， 在建設地， 其他樹受損傷， 因為施工活動。我擔心樹會受損傷， 因為再做工作， 或因為未來壓力， 在未來。它認為樹有危險， 樹可能在未來受損傷， 我們應該保護它。沒有經過充分的質問， 這樣被接受。謝謝。
謝謝你，Tinesse。我有Bernard 和 Mike。
謝謝主席， 謝謝你的報告， 我認為非常全面。是這樣嗎？ 根部被暴露。
我認為發生的是， 樹的保護牆， 在樹的距離附近， 在施工中， 在施工中。當我訪問樹時， 我看到很多很細的根部， 已經暴露。現在， 可能來自其他植物， 在區域， 但可能認為有些是樹。所以我們問， 是否要放那些根部在樹上。然後它被濕了。這樣可以防止根部的乾燥。還有， 有些根部被挖開， 在樹的距離附近， 木箱在那裡。雖然可能是。
我的擔心是， 在那個時候被損壞。能做的什麼？
我想會是， 證明有損傷。所以， 就像我說的， 那些根部會再生。你知道，細的根部被取代。保證它們不是全部損壞， 不是全部清除， 因為很多樹的根部， 在主人的院子。關於修復， 這是個難題， 樹的損傷， 它已經，你知道， 樹以前是保護的， 因為它是保育區的一部分。我認為理論上， 不理論上， 保護樹的根部也是保護的。所以， 但我不認為， 我作為監控部， 他們知道， 他們選擇了， 是否決定行動。我想我們自己會問， 樹是否受到損壞。我不認為， 從發生過的事情， 它發生過。所以。
謝謝。
謝謝。
謝謝。Mike，你有問題？ 委員長 Chaplin。
謝謝主席。如果， 鄰居的房屋賣了， 是否需要向 prospective buyers 開佈， 樹保育令號， 向 prospective buyers 開佈， 假設我們先走了？
你可以做，我可以回答。
謝謝。樹保育令號是本地負責， 所以，在過程中， 委員長會把他們放在本地負責上， 註冊。通常在傳遞過程， prospective purchasers 搜查註冊， 他們會調查委員長。所以他們會知道， 通過本地負責註冊， 和另一個叫 Con29 的搜索。所以， 那也有， 還有， 在流程中， 你必須提供， 作為賣， 一種， 如果你有 ongoing 緣由， 比如鄰居， 所以有三個不同的機會， 通過這些 common process， 找到。
這樣可以嗎？ 謝謝，委員長 Chaplin。好的。我可以看到沒有其他問題。有成員有什麼意見？ 沒有。所以， 那就是， 樹保育令號 460， 應該被確認， 不修改。我會去整個室內， 謝謝。
支持。
委員長當寧。
支持。
委員長 Price。
支持。
委員長 Chaplin。
支持。
支持。
委員長 Wetherall。
支持。
支持。
委員長 Masters。
支持。
委員長 Woodcraft。
支持。
和委員長 McCann。
支持。
所以， 我認為這被允許了？ 是的，謝謝你， 謝謝你確認了。我們的下一个議程， 是樹保育令號 462， 位置是 Mount Pleasant 公眾中心， 沙瑞路。所以我們回到 Tinesse 為你介紹報告。可以嗎？
非常感謝。樹保育令號 462是27月22 日發行， 保護兩棵梨樹， 在 Mount Pleasant 公眾中心， Sheffield， 在沙瑞。一份一份的報告， 和它附帶的圖表， 在附件 A 中。在25月22 日， 委員長的環境員要求， 樹在現場的評估， 是否適合保護。從收到全計劃申請， 關於 refurbishment 和主要房子的改變。環境員說， 這些兩棵樹， 被顯示為保留， 但計劃顯示， 樹的根保護區域， 在一棵樹中， 沒有任何保護， 比如被保育區， 或被 TPO 許可。我擔心樹會受損傷， 或在建設階段。在批准計劃許可後， LPA 是負責人義務， 以及在需要時， 給到這樣的條件。因此， 它被認為是為了保護， 按照上述義務， 在這裏， 我巡視了樹， 在28月19 日， 進行個時溫度測試。被評估為適合保護的樹， 是兩棵梨樹， 分數為 14和15 分， 提供了保護的明確建議。一份一份的報告， 在附件 B 中。關於顯眼性， 兩棵成熟梨樹， 這是主路， 斜過沙瑞， 在更高的位置， 和巨大的規模， 它們特別突出。因為它的大小和位置， 它的公開顯眼性， 被視為非常高的。它們在總體良好條件。它們曾經修剪， 但在檢查時， 在全葉狀態， 顯示良好的形象。它們在檢查時沒有嚴重的缺陷。樹的壽命時間， 是保守的， 我想它們能夠提供當地的保護， 在未來。關於速度， T1 是感知性風險， 而 T2 是可見的。T2 是在維持牆上的開口。T2 的風險水平， 顯示了兩個樹受損傷， 或在建設階段。在拆遷的計劃中， 拆遷的計劃， 在 T2 的根區域中， 被計劃計劃。沒有經過充分的質問， 關於 TPO。謝謝。
謝謝你。有成員有問題嗎？ 委員長 Little。
謝謝。我們知道誰擁有樹，
Tinesse，你想回答嗎？
是的，我個人不知道誰擁有樹， 雖然 Richard Cannon， 他做了法律調查， 誰擁有樹， 但我其實沒有他的名。
還有其他問題嗎，委員長？
謝謝。
謝謝。有成員有問題嗎？ 沒有，我看不出任何指揮。所以，我會去投票。和建議， 根據報告， 是樹保育令號 462， 應該被確認， 不修改。再次， 我會去整個室內， 委員長伍德卡克。
支持。
委員長當寧。
支持。
委員長 Price。
支持。
委員長 Chaplin。
支持。
委員長 Little。
支持。
委員長 Wetherall。
支持。
委員長 Davison。
支持。
委員長 Masters。
支持。
委員長 Woodcraft。
支持。
和委員長 McCann。
支持。
謝謝。這被確認為合法。所以，非常感謝。謝謝你， 為我們的時間， 在發布議程。在上次會議中被拒絕。所以， 我們會移動申請。讓我看看阿碧的列表， 是， 申請號 21/01694FUL， 土地在 Dixon Dawson 立書人。在議程中。然後我們會有一個小的， swap round， 有幾個成員不在板會， 上一月。所以， 會是， 委員長伍德卡克， 委員長當寧， 委員長 Chaplin， 和委員長 Little。我會問你， 因為法律上， 我們只能， 哦，對不起， 和委員長 Masters， 只有我們在那裏， 在那時候做出決定的人， 才能坐在这里， 和決定。因為這個原因， 委員長 Notte， 會回到會議中， 在那時候， 和討論和決定。這就是， 基本上， 和我們是， 我們是合格的。是的， 是的， Vicky，我解釋了。好的， 那很好。那很好， 你有時間，阿碧。好的， 那很好。所以， 我會去 Chris， 所以， 是在 Cotton Street， 哦，沒有， 不是， 是另外， 是另外一圈， 是土地在 Dixon Dawson 立書人。是 21/06494FUL。我真的要關門了。
謝謝主席。所以我把顯示移動， 因為你已經拿到了這個項目。你會看到， 這個計劃， 房間， 在南東和北， 在 Marlborough 道和 Wittem Road。以前， 還有， 還在商業用途， 在土地的底部， 在接觸的。然後， 在南面， 是大學， All Weather Sports Pictures。雖然在這個畫面， 他們有， 裝置， 裝置和建築在他們， 和社會科學的建築， 所以， 它是封閉的土地， 由圍牆封蓋， 在地點， 有接觸。你可以看到， 在 Wittem Road 的後面， 正在居住。大多是多居， 有些分為平房。住宅的佔用， 在 Marrocks 道和 Marlborough 道， 和學生房， 和一些平房。這， 這是畫面， 是兩座建築， 在接觸的。接觸， 在那條路的左側。那是反向。這樣給你一些背景。它是， 在 Broomhill 保育區。這些建築代表了， 建築的規模和性格， 和建築在那里的地方。這是一個看向地點， 向下接觸。你可以看到右邊的停車場。人們可以取得許可。那還在。和地點， 是那條路的路線， 就在那輛小黑車的後面， 是地點。然後停車線， 你可以看到， 也是， 地點 beyond 那。你可以看到， 在距離， 社會科學的建築， 現在正在建設， 和你可能知道。這是， closer view， 是地點的開始。所以停車站還在。後面的樓宇， 你可以看到， 是， 在 Marlborough 道的後面。再次，你可以看到社會科學的建築。你會看到， 地點， 你可以從照片中看出， 是主要是森林， 自建森林。我會稍後說更多， 但是它不是最好的狀態。這是 general view， 再次， 在 Marlborough 道的樓宇。稍微 closer image， 沒有圍牆， Uh, a slightly closer image without the fence, the properties on Marlborough Road showing their relationship to the site. What you can begin to see there is how, how steeper the site drops. It's in a hollow, um, it's fair to say at the, at the bottom there. This is in the top sort of north east corner of the site. The relationship you see there is between the terraced areas of the, on, on the rear of the properties on, uh, Wittem Road, um, and the site, which is, is, is where the fence, fence line is. Fence line is the start of the site. That's looking back up the access road, um, with the property in the middle of the image. Uh, that's the commercial property that fronts, uh, Morrocks Road currently used for sort of beauty, uh, therapy, um, clinic. And again, a view from the, showing the relationship of the site to the, uh, the, the, the terraces of the, uh, houses on Wittem Road. So the development, which is a, a three, four story, uh, block, uh, would be broadly speaking where that left hand tree, um, sits, although not quite as close. That's the, that's where it kind of starts. Um, again, looking back towards Marlborough Road and then looking back up showing the relationship with the properties on, at the back of the properties on, on Wittem Road. This is the entrance and exit, uh, onto Morrocks Road. And I think that's the last one, yeah. So, um, it's, it's within the Broomhill Conservation Area. It's housing area two and is also part of the, uh, within the Be Best, uh, Neighbourhood Plan area. Um, you can hopefully pick out on the site there where the, where the building is. It's to, towards the top of the site, a rectangular block, um, three full stories with one additional floor in the roof space to create thirteen apartments. Uh, they are, uh, a mixture of eight one bedroom, three two bedroom and two three bedroom units. Um, so thirteen in total with, uh, eleven car parking spaces. Nine of the spaces are in that, uh, sort of parking area in the centre of the site. And then there are two, uh, between the building, the right hand side of the building, uh, and the edge of the site. So there are eleven spaces for thirteen units. Um, within those areas of development, all the trees are cleared, uh, in the proposal. Uh, there are two main groups of trees which stay and you may or may not be able to pick out those with a green outline. So they are towards the, the southern end of the bulk of the site. Roughly the bottom third of that is, is largely untouched, save for creating a, an informal footpath route through it, um, to make it slightly more safe and welcoming for pedestrians. Um, and then to the, in the top southeast corner, you can see the trees that have been retained there. And there's also some additional tree planting, um, as part of a landscape scheme. Uh, these are floor layouts, um, which give you an indication of the, the scale of the accommodation. That's the ground floor. So you can see towards the bottom, slightly to the right of middle, uh, is, is the main entrance. Um, and then, and, and you can see also from that that most of the outlook, the main outlook is, uh, to the front and to the rear. Those windows on the side, uh, would be obscure glazed. Um, and that's a second floor layout. The, the, the layout is essentially repeated, uh, up the building. In, in terms of built form, um, it adopts many features of, uh, of the, of the traditional sort of vernacular of the area, uh, stone built slate roof, uh, gable features, chimneys, um, with some contemporary detailing, particularly around, for instance, the windows. Uh, but the scale, form, roof pitch, et cetera, uh, reflects the, the, the character of the area. Um, and you can see from that a little bit better how the relationship works in terms of scale of building. So bearing in mind that the properties that it's shown either side, to the left Marlborough Road, to the right Wittem Road are effectively cross sections through a building, um, that are at ninety degrees to, to this. Um, it looks much wider, this one looks much wider, but it, but it's, it's not particularly. Um, it's just the kind of the, the different angle that you're looking at it at. What that does show is the, the height, um, sits quite comfortably in the, in the hollow. And what's important to note is those diagonal lines are representing a twenty five degree line that's taken from the, uh, nearest ground floor windows. And we use that as a tool to assess how overbearing a structure might be. Uh, above that line, it's likely to be overbearing. Below it, it's, it's not likely to be overbearing. The distance between the, um, the rear of the residential properties and the side of the new building, uh, are seventeen and eighteen metres. Um, I think it's slightly larger to Wittem Road than it is to, to Marlborough Road, if I remember correctly. Um, so I will leave the layout there. Um, so we've had, uh, as you'll see, a significant number of objections set out in the report across a, a fair spectrum of issues, um, that we've addressed within the report. Uh, the five year supply position, as you'll be aware, means that the tilted balance is in play as per paragraph eleven of the M P P F. Um, unless it's concluded that the, there is a clear reason for refusal, uh, in this case on, on heritage grounds, because that's one of the factors that, uh, that we can take into account that over, overcomes or trumps that kind of, uh, paragraph. Uh, we don't consider that, uh, that, um, that clear, uh, reason for refusal on heritage grounds exists here. Um, we don't, we feel that applying a test of, uh, that's required of us by the M P P F. Um, we don't feel that, uh, it's probably at, at worst less than substantial harm. It doesn't place a significant role within the conservation area. You can get glimpses of it as you're passing by. Um, but even that said, a, a large group of trees will remain at the, at the nearest point, which will soften or to some extent screen the building. Uh, and the building itself, as we, as we've set out in the report, we feel is a reasonable design in any event. Um, so we don't think that that, uh, that harm, um, occurs. So the presumption in paragraph eleven remains. Uh, in residential amenity terms, we feel that distances and separation between those properties is, it more than meets our guidelines, um, and doesn't present a basis for resisting the scheme. Um, the future occupants, uh, the, the, the flats are all of good, good standard of layout, uh, internally and space internally. Um, there is limited external amenity space. Um, the, the trees to the bottom of the site, as I say, have a, have a kind of a walkway through them, which will, will provide some value. And there is a very small kind of more formal area to the, um, north, um, east. Um, but again, that, that sort of, that level of a, a, a minute of space reflects the character of the area, which is quite dense. The trees, sorry, the, the trees, uh, have been surveyed and they've been identified to be almost, uh, nearly all of them in quite sort of poor condition. The multi-stemmed species that are self set, a lot of them, uh, a lot of them are covered in, covered in ivy and, and need a lot of management, but are also very tall and thin, uh, and therefore prone to damage and, and don't, aren't seen to have a particularly long life. Um, that said, we do feel it's worthy of retaining, uh, those that are being retained, but we have no objections in principle to the rest of them being, being removed. Um, an ecology survey was undertaken, preliminary ecology assessment that didn't identify any features of, um, of particular note or worthy of protection on their own. Uh, there were some animal tracks that couldn't be detected at the time. So the, uh, recommendation is for, uh, and there is a condition that reflects this, um, for there to be a, a walkover survey, uh, not less than three months before the commencement of development. In terms of biodiversity on the theme of ecology, the, um, there would be a net loss. Uh, you'll be aware, we're supposed to achieve, um, or direct to achieve through M P P F policy, um, an enhancement, uh, and mitigation. Um, in this particular instance, there, there would be a loss and there is such limited scope for enhancement or mitigation on the site that in line with guidance, we've secured, uh, an agreement to a contribution for off-site enhancement. Um, so the recommendation you will see incorporates, uh, um, uh, the grant, the recommendation to grant conditionally subject to a legal agreement that requires, uh, a payment of four and a half thousand pounds towards, um, biodiversity enhancement in the locality. Um, and then parking provision is an issue that's been raised, uh, in, in consultation and in, uh, with neighbour notification. But as we set out in the report, it's an extremely sustainable site. You'll not find probably much better within the city in a, in a location like this. There's a minor shortfall, uh, in, in parking provision, but its location, uh, we feel is such that that, that's acceptable, um, and so doesn't represent a, a reason for resisting the scheme. If I can just, if you just bear with me a little longer, uh, if I could turn your attention to, um, item two on the supplementary agenda, um, because there's an, an additional representation that needs a little bit of explaining. Um, and a couple of other, uh, smaller matters. So the additional representation has been received from the Chair of the Be Best Neighbourhood Planning Forum, um, who requests it's presented in full to the committee. Uh, so as we've said there, it's pasted in italics below, but I will read it out. It's been brought to our attention as Chair of the Be Best Neighbourhood Planning Forum that policy S B C two is being set aside in the report on, on this planning application. Despite carrying significant weight, um, and being the cornerstone of our planning to create housing for local needs in our local area, exactly as government legislation expects for neighbourhood plans. S B C two was developed on the basis of the substantial evidence documented in the plan and subject to rigorous examination by the plan's examiner. As you will know, our plan had over ninety percent majority vote in its referendum. S B C two's importance to our area cannot be overstated when we have a severe lack of three bed properties at the extreme end for the whole city. It's therefore very surprising not to see the policy enforced. Be Best strongly recommends the planning committee enforces the policy, which applies to all applications for development of ten dwellings or more and requires no less than fifty percent of dwellings with three bedrooms within that development. We'd like you to bring the full text of this email to the attention of the planning committee at the meeting and the email is copied to local councillors for information. Um, so in response to that, the representation suggests that local policy S B two is being set aside despite carrying significant weight. Uh, the neighbourhood plan is part of the development plan and developments which conflict with up to date planning policies, including neighbourhood plans, shouldn't normally be granted. And that's set out in paragraph twelve of the M P P F. Due to the lack of a five year housing supply, the policies which are most important for determining this application of housing are in fact out of date as opposed to up to date as required, um, in, in that statement. And when the so-called tilted balance is engaged, as it is in this case, they set out on pages one oh six to one oh seven in the report, paragraph fourteen of the M P P F provides that the adverse impact of allowing development that conflicts with recent neighbourhood plan policy is likely to significantly indemonstrably outweigh the benefits where all four of the following apply. So for that to apply, the following need to be, uh, true. Uh, so that's that the plan is less than two, two years old. The plan contains policies and allocations to meet its identified housing requirement. Uh, the authority has at least a three year supply of housing sites. And the authority's housing delivery was at least forty five percent of that required over the previous three years. As we say below there, the Be Best Neighbourhood Plan was adopted in the summer of twenty twenty one, so it meets test A, it's less than two years old. Uh, Sheffield has a three point six year supply of deliverable housing sites. Um, and its delivery of housing was a hundred and twenty seven percent of that required, uh, over that period, so part C and D are met too. However, the plan doesn't contain policies and allocations to meet its identified housing requirement. So part B isn't met, meaning that the provision identified in paragraph fourteen of the M P P F, uh, doesn't apply. Um, it's, so it's not the case that officers have set the policy aside as suggested in the representation. The officer report discusses the requirements of the policy, uh, reflects the fact that the scheme's been amended to better reflect its ambitions, uh, and discusses the degree of non-compliance with the fifty percent three bed content. In reference to the point about it being amended, um, when it originally came in, it was purely, uh, one and two bedroom units and, and a greater number of units. Uh, only fourteen versus fifteen, uh, thirteen. But so the numbers have been reduced and, and a greater spread of accommodation to include the two three bedroom units. So the adverse impact this creates in the context of paragraph eleven is that limited development opportunities occur within the neighbourhood plan area. And the policy seeks to ensure that more three bed units are delivered in an area where they're lacking. Um, thirteen dwellings in an area with limited development opportunities is seen as a benefit of the scheme, uh, as a whole, but it is acknowledged that the policy compliance, a policy, a full, fully policy compliant development would deliver additional benefits. Um, the, the report identifies the policy as having significant weight on page one oh nine, but it doesn't provide the additional, uh, context in the light of the tilted barren balance in paragraph fourteen of the M P P F. And there's no specific, specific reference to the policy alongside the other considerations in the balancing section, um, although there is in the final summary, uh, which is in omission. So the view of officers is that non-compliance with fifty percent three bed unit requirements of the policy as an adverse impact would not be considered to significantly indemonstrably outweigh the benefits that are set out in the balancing exercise on page one twenty. I'm sorry, that was very long. Um, but essentially the conclusion is that, um, we, we, we don't feel that the non-compliance with the three bed, uh, requirement policy has an ad, uh, that, that is an adverse impact is sufficient to outweigh the, uh, the benefits. Uh, then a couple of more items, the, the draft local plan, there's reference there to, uh, that you'd be familiar with and I think you've been speaking about earlier, that, um, states authorities may give weight to relevant policies in emerging plans, dependent on, on various aspects that's set out there, including the stage of development and, um, consistency with the framework. So the current version of, of our plan has recently been consulted upon and that identifies the site as being within a residential zone, uh, and in the current U D P allocation, the site's a, a housing area. And in both instances, um, policies associated with both plans, uh, identify the class C three residential use, as this is, as a preferred use. So there's no significant, uh, change there. And then finally, Chair, um, a corrected condition. So condition sixteen was missing a number. Uh, it required the applicant to commit to and provide details of electric vehicle char, charging points where it didn't specify the number, there was a, uh, an insert missing. Um, and that's confirmed as being six. So a minimum of the six, eleven spaces, there will have to be electric vehicle, uh, charging points. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a very complex report. Uh, Chris, can I just ask you to? Yeah, thank you. I have one speaker on this application and that's Mr. Robin Hughes. Mr. Hughes, if...
Is councillor Argentio for this one, sorry?
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm still looking at the wrong bit of my list. Angela councillor, Angela Argentio, if you'd like to come forward please to the central desk and you have up to five minutes when you're, when you're ready, uh, to make your points. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair. Um, my name is councillor Angela Argentio. I'm, I represent Broomhill and Sherrillville Ward and I'm here to represent residents in the area and also Be Best Neighbourhood Group. And I have a question first of all. Why have residents, the Be Best Neighbourhood Group and local councillor, councillors not, um, been properly informed about this returning planning application? Councilors, residents and Be Best objected to the proposal three times before, twice in twenty twenty and this one in twenty twenty one, which was then withdrawn. And now again, the same application returns to the same, with, uh, from the same developer, but why have all the same residents, councillors and Be Best's, uh, neighbourhood planning group, uh, who commented before, not been informed? I only stumbled across this application last week when I was at C M T meeting because one of the Lib Dems, um, um, councillors asked, said, have you seen the application? It's come back. Um, and so I went and looked for it and it's, you know, and that's why Be Best know because that's how it happened. So Be Best policy are the most up to date part of Sheffield Local Planning Regulation, but Be Best committee tell me that they have not been engaged with the planning, this planning application. They've not been even informed that this application was coming to committee. They are not able to be here, as you know, so they've made, you know, they've made a written statement. Uh, and that is because the planning, planning officers did not tell them. I asked that the councillor asked for this, so I would like to ask for this application to be withdrawn until proper community consultation takes place and Be Best and residents are informed properly. I've also had, um, a few emails from residents that eventually got undone. Um, as for this substance, there is a reduction in size, but, uh, not in environmental and visual impact and in the air quality problems. Uh, the bu, the building, the build quality is lacking. It fails to meet Broomhill Conservation Area guidelines, uh, as Be Best pointed out, uh, of it in the architecturally or stylistically with the More Oak Triangle Houses of towns, uh, townscape merit. It will not preserve or enhance their character or appearance, section sixty nine of the nineteen nineteen Plan, Planning, Listed Building and Conservation Area Act or the Be Best policies. For people who don't know where this is, it, what is called the hollow is actually a place where there are, yeah, lots of trees that might not look very, uh, pretty because it's very wild. And the building there that are, you know, their entrances on Wittem Road, the back, they don't have back gardens, they literally have like balconies. So that building would be so close to the buildings opposite. Um, and it's really worth a visit if you haven't been where the, the, you know, the, the all weather uh, grounds are for the university, that used to be a dam. So it was water, you know, for, for about a hundred years and then it was filled in and we had like a AstroTurf and things and now there is the, the science building there. So it's really worth going and having a look and see how narrow it is. And one of the pictures that was shown where the entrance was shown, there were lots of cars coming out of, um, of the, of the road. If you, there is one of them where there is just the entrance and there's traffic on the road. Look at that. Okay, and that is one of the problems with the, 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 um, More Oak Triangle. Um, Be Best in their original objection say that the area is already at or beyond capacity for transport and the encouragement via additional parking will make this worse. Over twenty thousand vehicles travel through the area each day, contributing to poor air quality within the nearby shopping area. Um, that other sustainability exceeds legal safety limits. Uh, the junction of Wittem Road and Morrocks Road, which is the one just at the bottom there, um, is an area blighted by, uh, linked traffic, parking over density of housing and air pollution issue. Uh, and this development will exacerbate this. There are multiple university project in this immediate area, either ongoing or with planning permission and continuing expansion of the various hospitals nearby adding to those issues. This application is effectively garden grabbing, robbing the area of available valuable green space and a wildlife, wildlife corridor. So preserving the wildlife, wildlife corridor is one of the aims of the Be Best Neighbourhood Planning. Um, and our officer has told me that it will be a net loss of biodiversity. Uh, you know, if you haven't found wildlife, you've not looked hard enough, you just have to go there. It's very wild, there's badgers, there's foxes, there's lots of nesting birds, there's lots of insects, there's lots of creepy crawling, there's lots of, uh, rodents probably. And so I don't understand why we would want to, we would want to provide, you know, deprive this area of, of green space that's been there for hundreds of years, basically. Um, so, uh, I would like the application to be withdrawn, um, so that residents, councillors and Be Best Group can port proper representation and object properly again.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Chris, are there any of those points you'd like to respond to?
Yes, please, Chair. So just to go over the planning history a little bit before I answer the point about notification. There have been three, this is the third application. Two previous ones for twenty-seven units. I think those were all one-bedroom units and that's set out in the in the report. I'm looking for the page number. In the early section of the report, we say in the planning history section, yeah, page one oh three. So there was a withdrawn application in 2020 for twenty-seven one-bed units. And then a second application withdrawn again for twenty-seven one-bed units. So the scheme didn't change much then. It was a slightly bigger building as well. We weren't supportive of that and the applicant was made aware of that, and that's why they were withdrawn. They took the decision to withdraw rather than receive a refusal at that time. There would have been notification of the Be Best as a neighbourhood forum with a neighbourhood plan or a statutory consultee. So we notify them of all applications within their plan area. So they would have been notified on the previous applications, as would the ward councillors. We've just checked our system and they were notified, both Be Best and all the ward councillors, in July twenty twenty-one, which was when the application was first submitted. So it has been in a long time and I can understand them feeling that things were a little dormant perhaps. But that, and it being then a bit of a surprise when the decision was ready for being made. But we have received a large number of representations, Chair. There's thirty-four, I think, including two from councillors and some of the interest groups. In terms of, there are quite a few of those people, as we're aware, keep up to date with an application using the facility on the website to do so. But what we don't do is, unless there is someone with a regular contact with us, we wouldn't normally identify when an application is going to commit. We don't routinely tell all people that have commented when an application is going to commit, Chair. But they have been notified and many of the people, as I say, have commented. In terms of other comments that were made, the reference to Be Best guidelines not being met in terms of the policy around fifty percent of the units being three-bedroom are covered in the earlier statement. There was reference to those guidelines which relate to sort of conservation matters and also a suggestion that the scheme doesn't preserve or enhance the conservation area as required by the Act. We've set out in the report why we think it does preserve, at least, in that the site in terms of visual quality from the trees is fairly limited, we would say. There's some visual benefit, but it's more viewed from within the site than its impact on the public areas of the conservation area. And again, we feel the building is of a reasonable design in that context. In terms of proximity, it was mentioned to be extremely close to residents. I think I said at the beginning, it's seventeen to eighteen metres from the nearest properties. So it's a little bit difficult to pick them out on here because the lines are all the same thickness. But the backs of the houses on Marlborough Road were in the order of seventeen, eighteen metres to that gable wall of the building. Normally, our guideline, one of our guidelines refers to twelve metres as being an appropriate distance. And again, the question whether something's overbearing, we feel, has been demonstrated through the cross-section there. And it's a similar relationship with Witten Road, probably slightly less favourable to Witten Road residents. In terms of traffic problems, Helen might want to comment on traffic impact. But in terms of air quality, the size of the scheme isn't sufficient to trigger an air quality assessment. So there hasn't been one for this site. It's much too small for it to meet that threshold. But we do say within the report on page one one eight, one one nine, that considering the thresholds that exist, current monitoring tubes are actually showing something of a reduction in air quality problems within the area. And the most recent indications, we list there midway down, page one one nine, usually the maximum consideration for nitrogen dioxide, for example, is forty micrograms per cubic metre. And the most recent diffusion tube analysis in twenty twenty-one shows it at thirty-four micrograms. So it's below. But in any event, it's not a scheme that is of a size that would trigger assessment specifically. In terms of the loss of the green space, which was, I think, which was the final point, we're not saying that there is no wildlife present there. There is when I visited the site, you know, birds are tweeting, et cetera. There is wildlife within the site, which is one of the reasons why there's a reduction in biodiversity. What the ecology assessment identified was that there were no particular species, protected species, that warranted any special treatment or assessment. So we're acknowledging that there is a reduction in wildlife quality, if you like, or quantity potentially on the site. Although there are some large areas of tree cover remaining and undergrowth that will remain, along with some mitigation on-site in the form of bat boxes, bird boxes and openings for foraging animals. And that's all, Chair, unless Helen wants to say anything about the traffic.
Thank you, Chris. Helen, would you like to come in?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think just to, you know, give an indication of the level of traffic that we would expect this site to generate. We would be looking at something about fifty-two vehicular movements over a twelve-hour period, probably around three vehicles in the AM and PMPs. I do appreciate that the area generally does have a high level of traffic flow around it. But I think, as you'll appreciate, the relatively small increase in traffic that would be added to that couldn't really be deemed as a highway safety or capacity issue. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you for that, Helen. I'm going to come to now to members' questions. Roger.
Thank you, Chair. On number twenty of the conditions, it says surface water shall be restricted to a maximum flow of three point litres per second. How will this be achieved and where will it be situated? Any mechanism? Thank you.
Chair, I don't have that detail at the moment, but there are several ways it can be achieved. And that's through a combination of infiltration on the site, permeable areas, tanks which slow down the rate of flow. But I don't have that detail at the moment. That's something that would come later.
Is that satisfactory? Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Little, Bernard.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I've got considerable concerns about this development. One I'd like to talk just about to Be Best. I used to live in that area in the eighties. And during that time, there was a lot of uproar in that area about people paving over their gardens. So we've already lost a huge amount of wild space, places for insects and garden birds. It's changed an enormous amount as the number of built family homes has been lost. So Be Best, I've been aware of the organisation for probably, and we seem to be talking about it for twenty years, but to my knowledge, it's one of the sort of premier-
Also, is there a question in here? Is this a comment?
Well, I'm just concerned that Be Best has not been, in spite of all its its expertise, has been missed from all from this process, has not been adequately engaged with. And that's why I've got a big concern that I think that there is a lot more could be said. I'm concerned about drainage in the area and flooding in the area. The entrance to that-
I ask again, I'm sorry, but you seem to be jumping ahead on the agenda. You seem to be expressing concerns rather than this is the time to ask questions of officers.
Have you looked at the drainage in the area when it concerns flooding? Because the entrance to the car park at the back, it's in a hollow. Has that been considered? Because that's a natural draining point. My concern is that water, when it does rain hard and we have extreme weather, is going to be an issue. Has that been looked at?
Yes, it has, Chair. Our drainage team have been consulted and that's resulted in the conditions, going back to the previous question, around restricting flow rates and requiring certain areas of the site to be, hard-surfaced areas of the site to be permeable porous to allow infiltration so that water doesn't run off as rapidly.
Do you have any follow-up questions, councillor?
Questions. I'm concerned about the wildlife corridor. I understand a preliminary ecology survey has been done. Have you, why haven't you done a full ecological survey of the site?
Chair, the, sorry, the word I always struggle to say. Preliminary assessment is there to make an assessment of the likely potential for features of interest. And that's a common way of approaching it. And that's what was done in this case. And that's then reported back to our ecology team and all parties were satisfied that there was no need to go any further. The site was visited and assessed. And the only requirement that came out of it, as I say, was unidentified tracks that required a further walkover survey before works commenced to make sure that any species that then do exist have the benefit of being protected. And that's set out in the conditions in front of you.
So would such a survey by the ecologists be looking at the, because this is a wildlife corridor? Will they be looking at the impact of this being a continuous wildlife corridor that goes through where the, through where the building is at the moment, through into where the sports ground used to be and on? That we need corridors of wildlife. Has that been considered?
It has been considered in the round. Specifically, the survey would have been looking for features on the site. It would be wrong to say that, considered a wider corridor. But we've considered that as part of our assessment. And although there are large areas of tree cover that are being removed, it's fair to say also that large areas remain. And in terms of a corridor, that would still be evident because you've got trees in the bottom part of the site, trees towards the top of the site, and then they continue around the perimeter of the sports pitch that does remain. So the corridor is maintained. It's not entirely broken, Chair.
Does that answer your questions, councillor?
I've got several more. Do the, when you look at it as a planner, when a tree is looked at and it's got ivy on, is that considered a healthy tree or one that has, you know, a short lifespan?
Chair, it's usually, it's rarely considered a positive factor. I think that's something, I'm no tree expert, Chair. The one that we did have has left the room, which is why I was looking over there earlier. But it's often referred to in tree surveys as being a negative of a tree's health when it's covered in ivy.
So I am aware that ivy is a very rich habitat for- That's a statement, councillor. Can you ask your questions?
Would the planning team reconsider the way they look at trees and the role of ivy?
Chair, I think there's kind of two questions in one there. So in terms of the health of a tree, it's my understanding that ivy isn't a good thing particularly. But I think the question also alludes to the wildlife benefit of ivy, which is a separate question. And that will have been considered in the biodiversity net gain assessment.
Right. And finally, should today this plan fail, would you consider going back to the Be Best community and engaging them in problem solving in this area where there is a distinct lack of three-bedroom housing?
Chair, we meet with the Be Best representatives periodically to review implementation of the plan and its policies with cases as and when they arise. So that is probably something that would materialise as a result of any decision made today.
Thank you for that. I now have a question from councillor Mike Chaplin. And can I remind contributors to turn their microphone off when they've finished asking questions to allow the camera to track the next speaker, please?
Thank you, Chair. Paragraph fourteen of the MPF, NPPF is what I'm referencing here. Because on your supplementary report, the fourth page, you say that all four, trying to work out what exactly they are, but A, B, C and D, a bit further down on that page, all four of those objectives, are they? Or what would you call them, requirements? Are needed if it's going to offset the tilted balance? So looking at B, the plan contains policies and allocations to meet its identified housing requirement, the plan being the plan that Be Best have drawn up. Yeah. Can you explain why you say that, given that Be Best have made clear that the kind of housing they're short of in the area is three-bedroom properties and this proposal doesn't come up to the fifty percent that would be required? And there was something else in there. Yeah, so why does that not actually amount to a policy when, you know, it is clearly stated in their plan?
Chair, I think the view we took on that was that, yes, I see exactly the point that's been made, that there is a policy there, a SBC two, which seeks to meet, which the policy seeks to meet an identified need, which is a need for three-bed housing within the area. Just to put a little bit more on that for members' benefit is that the assessment of housing stock within the plan area- stock within the plan area identifies that within the area, there's only 17% of the housing stock is three bed housing, whereas on a citywide average is 45%, so it's quite significantly lower. That's what the plan says, and that's because there's a greater proportion of larger housing than citywide average, and a greater proportion of smaller housing. It's evident from that. So there is a policy that attempts to identify that housing requirement. There aren't allocations specifically, there aren't sites within the plan area where housing is identified to meet particular needs, and I think that's the view that we came to on that point, that it wasn't specifically meeting Part B, because it wasn't identifying any allocations. So it part meets B, I think it's fair to say.
Do you need to come back councillor?
I think I do, because now we've got recognition that we've got three and a half out of four, but not the four. So what do Be Best need to do that would then satisfy the planning department so that they could make sure that in future, they have a 50% allocation of three bed properties to meet their housing requirements that they've identified in the area?
Thank you councillor, right, I'm going to go to Vicky to answer this one.
Thank you Chair. Just in terms of the supplementary, so in terms of what Be Best needs to do, the MPPF first of all, there's a paragraph 12 there that says that a development that accorded up to date policies, or something, sorry, something that should conflict with up to date policies would not normally be granted. Obviously when you get to that point, you then look at material considerations and that sort of may sway the balance. So there's that point there in terms of up to date policies, as you know, because we haven't got a five year housing land supply currently, that means that these policies are considered to be out of date. So that's where the first problem arises. So when you get to out of date housing policies, as you know, we've got housing application here, we go to the tilted balance. So what paragraph 14 provides is that when you get to the tilted balance and you have a recent neighbourhood plan policy, that a conflict with that recent neighbourhood plan policy, if all four of these apply, is likely to be an adverse impact that outweighs the benefits. But as we've discussed, the Be Best plan doesn't make any housing allocations in the plan, it states the area is densely built up and it was noted with SCC and early stage that housing allocation issues were not going to be part of this neighbourhood plan. So on that basis, the neighbourhood plan doesn't benefit from paragraph 14 and that additional provision in respect of the tilted balance and the conflict with the neighbourhood plan being an adverse impact, which is likely to outweigh the benefits. So that's really in terms of going forward, obviously if we have a five year housing land supply, then the policy would be considered in date, and if the plan is further reviewed later on and makes housing allocations to meet its identified housing needs, and it was a recent plan, it would then benefit from paragraph 14, but that currently isn't the case. So I apologise for that being quite long winded and technical, but I'm happy to try and answer any more questions.
Are there any more member questions? Councillor Wetherall?
Yeah, thanks Chair, thanks for that Chris. It's just on page 98 actually, it's about the boxers and things that nesting birds and bats and whatever we're going to have in there. It's, is this site management plan, are these going to be renewed? You know, because if they're going to be in there, I don't, it don't say how many, but I know that's going to come later on, but I just wonder if it's going to be, are they going to be renewed later on?
Chair, I'm just looking for the exact wording of the condition, would you mind pointing the number out for me please?
It's 98, it's 23...
What that requires is for details to be submitted for our approval, so we need to assess whether if they're in an appropriate location, how many of them there are, whether they're going to achieve the kind of benefits we're looking for. Then the second part of the condition is that those approved details have to then be implemented before they're first occupied, and they're after retained. So the condition requires them to be retained. We don't ask for a management plan as such, because my view is we don't need to do that because the condition requires them to be retained once they've been installed.
Is that satisfactory? Yep, okay.
Yes, thanks Chair, I knew that was going to be the answer, but I thought I'd ask, thanks.
Okay. I can see no more questions, so I'm going to go to members' comments. Do any members have any comments? Councillor Downing?
Yes Chair, thank you. In my time on council, and I've been on this committee on several occasions, and I'm on my own today, but it never ceases to amaze me that when we have buildings, sites like this, with insufficient car parking, one or two of the objectors have cited insufficient car parking, it's just, how we assume that people don't have cars, well, I'll never get my head around that one. But in light of the tilted balance, I'm going to vote in favour of the officer recommendation.
Thank you councillor, I've got councillor Mike Chaplin. Mike, Tony can you turn your mic off? Yeah, I've done, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Something that we've not asked, I fully take account of what councillor Tony Downing has just said about the lack of cuts. Nearly said that. I nearly said that councillor Bryce. Clearly take account of the point made about the lack of parking space for these 14 properties here, and we expect them to squeeze their vehicles into nine, and it's quite clear that there's, just across the way on Wittem Road, there are plenty of car parking spaces for those properties there. And they've all got to negotiate that quite steep incline to get out onto Moor Oaks Road. But it does suggest to me that the amount of housing that we're trying to cram into that space is too dense, and it is raised on page 108, Policy CS26 says that efficient use of housing land and accessibility requires housing developments to make efficient use of land, and they set the parameters of between 40 and 60 dwellings per hectare, and this comes in clearly at 81 dwellings per hectare. It's a bit ironic, because perhaps with one more three bedroom property and cutting out some of the smaller ones, they would also achieve the right balance of housing in the area as well. So primarily for that reason, I'm minded to vote against this proposal Chair.
Thank you councillor, councillor Little?
Yes, as I've said, I'm very concerned about this overdevelopment in an area where I know it's very difficult to find a parking space outside your house on those surrounding streets. I also know that Wittem Road, as you go up towards the crossroads in Brumhill, is an area that's very polluted, is an area where buses and other vehicles stop for long periods of time before they go through the traffic lights. So you've got a residual area of high road pollution in that area. So it is a concern. I also know that the area, referring again to overdevelopment, there are a huge number of houses in multiple occupation in that area. The buildings that are alongside Wittem Road there are mostly houses in multiple occupation, and students come there, it's a very high student area. So there's not a lot of local people in that area, and we feel they've been pushed out, and I feel that we do need family housing, and that's there. My final comment, I mean there's lots that I could comment on, is my big concern about the lack of engagement with Be Best. I don't think that they're, I think they are all very interested in the planning process, and I think to engage constructively with an organisation like this, with a huge amount of professional people there who are passionate about community planning, they would, I'm sure that they would welcome a more engaging process with the planning department. Thank you. So I will be voting against.
Thank you councillor, we've got councillor Price.
Thank you Chair. To be honest, I can't see a genuine planning ground for refusing this, compared to some we've agreed over the last few months. I think, having been to see the site and looked at that land, which is not in very good condition, lots of rubbish dumped on it, some of the trees are long and spindly, and I don't think it's the environmental plus that people claim it to be. The proposal is a stone built that fits in with the surrounding properties, it's below the height of the surrounding properties, there are not nine, there are 11 car parking places, because it's nine plus two, and plus the fact it's positioned within walking distance of the universities and the city centre and a decent transport, seems to me, in previous applications, we've not put the importance on to the car parking that some other areas would be. And I think I agree with the officers when they make that point. So I think on balance Chair, I think it'll improve the area to be honest with you, because once you drive down that slope and look at that land, it isn't in very good condition, and it's quite neglected, unmaintained, and I think this is a positive proposal, and I will support it Chair.
Thank you councillor, I've got councillor Masters.
Thank you Chair, actually councillor Price has said a lot of what I was going to say, because I think it's one of the few fully sustainable sites that we've actually had to deal with, with the ability to sort of, you know, use buses, walking cars, we've got the proximity of the hospitals, the university, the town centre, the trams, the shopping centre, 15 minute neighbourhood just up the road. If people cannot use their feet or cycle to these destinations, then I'm sorry, it doesn't bode well for the future of the city. So on sustainability grounds, I actually think, you know, it's a positive, but I do take on board Be Best's concerns about three bedroomed homes. Now that implies families, and this site, I cannot see appealing to a family, and I'm speaking as someone who actually used to live on Wittem Road. So I'm quite familiar with sort of the lighting, the damp, as well as sort of the tipping that took place there, so bearing everything in mind, yes, I can understand the desire for three bedrooms, but that is not the location for family homes, so I'll be supporting officer's recommendation, thank you.
Thank you councillor, I thought you were going to talk about the evidence of wildlife that we saw on the site as well.
Sorry, that's an in-joke, because there was a whole load of very brightly coloured ping pong balls, when you first looked at them, looked like birds' eggs, I was just commenting about what strange species of birds had laid these eggs.
Thank you. I can't see any more indications for comment, so I'm going to proceed to the recommendation. If I find my front sheet, and the recommendation is to grant conditionally subject to legal agreement, so for the reasons set out in the report, I'm going to go around the room and ask members to indicate whether they are in favour, against, or abstaining on the officer recommendation. Councillor Woodcock?
For the officer recommendation Chair.
Councillor Downing?
For the officer recommendation Chair.
Councillor Price?
For the recommendation Chair.
Councillor Chaplin?
Against the recommendation.
Councillor Little?
Against the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Wetherall?
For the officer recommendation Chair.
Councillor Davison?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Masters?
For the recommendation Chair.
Councillor Woodcraft?
For the recommendation Chair.
And councillor McCann?
For the recommendation Chair.
Thank you. Right, thank you Abbie. So that application is passed with eight votes for and two against, thank you very much. We're going to have a tiny bit of our hiatus now, while I have to gratefully thank you for your contribution, but ask the members that didn't take part in the deferred application last time around to leave the meeting, and to allow councillor Notte to join the meeting, and if any member wants to take advantage of, while the disruption is going on for a comfort break, we'll take a break for a couple of minutes. Two, application number 22/0120FUL, full application for land and the building between Cotton Street and 24 Alma Street. I'm going to pass over to Vicky here, because we deferred this application for very specific reasons, and Vicky will tell us what, how this next bit of the application is going to go, if that's okay.
Thank you Chair. So as you recall last time, members did have some questions about the draft plan, and what the draft plan says about things in this area. So it was decided through a vote to defer the matter, to allow clarification of the implications for this site of the draft local plan, and the planning officer has detailed that in supplementary report. So I'll pass over to Lucy now to go through briefly what's happened so far, and to clarify what's now in supplementary in respect to the draft local plan, which as you appreciate is a material consideration for this item, thank you.
Thank you Vicky. Lucy, over to you.
Thank you Chair, so we did the full presentation last time, the slides are still available for members to refer back to, but I've landed on this specific slide in terms of the supplementary information. So supplementary information includes supplementary information from the 14th of February, but obviously I went through that in detail at the last meeting. So members turn to the next part, which is the supplementary information for the 14th of March. And so as Vicky has alluded to, you wanted to see what the implications of the publication draft local plan were, which from now on we'll call the plan. So this is the additional slide, which highlights the designation of the application site and the designation of nearby areas, and this shows that the application site would lie in a residential zone. So the residential zone is the grey areas, so the application site clearly falls within a residential zone. So it's towards the bottom right hand side, as you look at the images, you can see that there's a site outlined in red, with a red outline, and that is the site that's immediately behind the application that we're dealing with, so that is an allocated housing site. And then the row of terraces is immediately to the north of that site. So in this zone, housing is a preferred use, commercial, business and service uses are listed as acceptable, and general industrial uses are classed as unacceptable. The nearest general employment zone is at Neeps End, and that's the purple, they're not coming out particularly well, the colours, I think you can just about distinguish that that's purple, but I've written on the slide, general employment zone, so that's to the north of the area. So that shows, that's about 500 metres by road if you go in either direction to get there from the site that we're talking about. There's no defined preferred use in those general employment zones, but commercial, business and service uses are listed as acceptable, and housing is listed as unacceptable in the general employment zone. And then the central area, flexible use zone is to the north, that's shown in yellow, and that would allow housing and commercial and business service uses, those would be acceptable, and general industry uses would be classed as unacceptable. And then just finally, there's a cultural zone, that just highlights where the museum is. In terms of, just a reminder that paragraph 48 of the National Planning Policy Framework states that local planning authorities may give weight to relevant policies in emerging plans according to the stage of preparation of the emerging plan, and the more advanced its preparation, the greater weight that may be given, the extent to which there are unresolved objections to relevant policies, the less significant the unresolved objections, the greater the weight that may be given, and also the degree of consistency of the relevant policies in the emerging plan. And also the degree of consistency of the relevant policies in the emerging plan to this framework. And the closer the policies in, in the emerging plan to the policies in the framework, the greater weight that they may be given. So obviously members are aware that the public consultation on the plan closed on the twentieth of February, and my colleagues in the strategic planning team are currently considering and collating the representations that have been received as a result of that consultation. And at this stage of the plan process, the comments are meant to specifically consider whether the plan is legally compliant or whether the plan is sound. In relation to the designation of the application site as falling within a residential zone, it is confirmed that no objections have been received to this specific designation. This means that the designation can now be given some weight in the decision-making process, particularly as the proposal to designate the area in this way will support the objective of boosting the supply of homes, which is paragraph sixty of the MPPF, and as a small site, make an important contribution to meeting the housing requirement within an existing settlement, and that is paragraph sixty-nine. So it's therefore concluded in terms of land use designation that the publication draft of the local plan, which was approved by full council, supports the conversion of this building to residential use. So Chair, I'll, I'll leave it there for the, for the purposes of this presentation.
Thank you Lucy. I have one speaker on this application. Mr Hughes, I now call you to the central console. If you'd like to make yourself comfortable, you know how to, to connect into the broadcasting system, and you have up to five minutes at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So I'm Robin Hughes, representing Hallowshire Historic Buildings. So members requested a report on provisions in the draft local plan that would enable traditional craft industries to carry on in the immediate area. The supplementary report does state that no objections have been submitted to residential allocations. But in fact, an amendment has been proposed to policy NC two as part of the public consultation, and that to me does constitute an objection since it addresses this specific item. I think the weight given to the draft local plan is thereby diminished. Nearly all of the conservation area south of the river, including this building, is in a residential zone. The existing industrial uses, as stated, are acceptable here. But unless protected, they will inevitably be pushed out by more lucrative residential users, as they are being. North of the river and near the ring road are flexible use zones, where again, more profitable residential or retail will prevail. Most of the area near the ring road is actually allocated specifically for housing. Just a small sliver of land at the furthest edge of the conservation area, separated from its historic core by the river, is a general employment zone, where the competition will be a wide range of commercial, business and service users, storage and distribution. It would be no contest. So no, nothing has been done in the draft local plan to ensure that traditional craftsmen can continue their industrial trades anywhere in this industrial conservation area. Officers are focused exclusively on the cosmetic appearance of the building, which they admit will be harmed, but this is too narrow. The planning listed Buildings and Conservation Areas Act nineteen ninety, section seventy-two protects both the area's appearance and its character. The two are not the same. Industry, not just industrial-looking buildings, is central to the character of this area. Historic England's Advice on Conservation Areas says explicitly that the current uses of buildings can contribute to character of an area, and advocates use-class policies to protect users that contribute to that character. So if members consider that the failure to provide for traditional trades is at odds with preserving or enhancing the character of Kellam Island Industrial Conservation Area, you're entitled to give this considerable importance and weight. In fact, the law tells you to do so. Many planning decisions come down to judging where the balance lies between unavoidable harm and benefit. The council has very recently adopted a heritage strategy, sending a strong signal that they intend to make that judgment so as to defend the historic environment and its economic, social and environmental benefits. In particular, council resolved that it believes that there are many cases where the city's industrial and craft heritage have been neglected, such as the loss of industrial heritage and craft trades for housing development in Kellam Island. If you judge this resolution to be more important than the proposal, proposals very small public benefits achieved by gutting rather than renovating the building, you are at liberty to refuse it. Add to this that the National Planning Policy Framework calls for proposals that are not well-designed to be refused. And the design in this case is so poor that we do not yet know or how, or even whether it will stand up under its own weight. Members have ample grounds on which to refuse this application, and I urge you to do so. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Mr Hughes. Lucy, would you like to respond to those comments please?
Chair, I think the, the majority of comments were responded to last time in terms of design and came out in members' questions, and I'm sure members will ask questions. Just specifically in, in terms of policy NC two, which Mr Hughes referred to. That's to do with strategic housing sites. And obviously the presentation that I was giving was in relation to the designation of the wider area as a residential zone. So, so obviously this site is not a strategic housing zone. So just to make that comment, so that, that's a specific policy about strategic housing sites.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Did, have I got any members indicating that they'd like to ask questions? Have I got any members' comments? councillor Davison?
Thank you. This area has always been mixed, particularly light engineering and housing. I remember this fifty odd years ago, so it, nothing has changed in that respect. I do feel however, from what we've learned today, that our hands are being tied on this one. However, I still think that we, it would be folly to, to push out some of these craft industries from an area that has entertained them over centuries. And therefore, as, as I see it, it's a change of use, and I'm going to vote against it.
councillor Price?
Yes, thanks Chair. Well, I'm going to support it Chair. If one thing we desperately need is affordable properties, houses, and this is going to provide fourteen new residential which will be affordable. And particularly in an area which is again a bit yuppie, and, and I just think we, we need to provide accommodation for this type of resident, this resident. People who can't afford some of the properties. I think you're right, and I feel it's, it's a shame that regarding the, the two firms that are there, but I'm hoping that these can be rehoused in other places to make rooms. I'm going to support the officer recommendations Chair. I've said something wrong?
No, I am going to just make a comment. You used the term affordable and strictly, Vicky?
Could I ask that the planning officer?
From the officer's report.
Can I ask the planning officer clarifies the situation with respect to affordable housing? Thank you.
Chair, thank you. Yes, we clarified this la, last time round. So in the supplementary report, I think there was, there was something, some text in the previous report that mentioned that it isn't affordable home. So I'm just, I need to clarify, we clarified that in the supplementary report last time around on the fourteenth of February, that it is not affordable housing. It's not in a, it doesn't trigger affordable housing because it's fourteen units, it's less than fifteen units. So Chair, that needs to be clarified. So I think you need to give councillor Price the opportunity to comment again.
Please come back in please.
You've just demolished my, my argument. No, but I still think that the housing is important, and we've got to get this, this, this tackle this, this absence of, of, of sufficient homes. So I'm still going to support the officer's recommendation Chair.
Thank you. councillor Notte, should I see you indicating?
Thank you Chair. As councillor Davison stated, our hands are to a certain extent tied in this instance. It seems that the emerging local plan, the Kellam Island and Neighbourhood Community Area Plan, and the core strategy of identifying this part of Kellam Island as residential. And it's very unlikely that the building will be able to be renovated if its use isn't changed due to the lack of capital investment in it. If it, as it's currently stands, if that, if that makes sense. However, I do feel that the council needs to put its money where its mouth is in terms of recognising our living heritage. And do everything we can to ensure that an area of Cornheaps End is protected for craft and makers. That's it.
councillor Weatherall, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, thanks, and it's going to be recorded as well what I'm going to say. I'm agreeing with Peter Price, Chair. And it's, it's from the last meeting we were here, and we were sat on this table, where the objections came and I understand where they're coming from. Neeps End, it's, it's a lovely block this is, and it'd be a shame to lose it. But with only forty percent, forty percent occupied, it's going to fall into disrepute, it's going to fall into wreck and ruin. And because there's only forty percent, nobody's coming in for years. Nobody's wanted to come in here. People are moving out, not coming back. So I'm going to have to vote for it Chair. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. councillor Woodcraft?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yeah, I mean, I agree with the comments of Peter Price and Gary Weatherall, really. I mean, I, I do share concerns about the changing nature of, of, of the area. And a bit, and, and the loss of, 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 of small craft from, from, from the area. But it doesn't look sustainable to me. I, I do also have concern about lack of parking. Anyone who wants to live there, if there's no parking there, they've got to make jolly well sure they live on a good bus route to wherever they're going to work, or the, or walking distance or cycling distance. I think, I think it could be a bit of a problem for, for them, but that is, that, that will be their decision, I think, if they choose to live there. So yeah, on balance, I think I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you councillor. I have no more indications, so I will move to the vote. And let me just get the front sheet so I can read it. So the recommenda, the officer recommendation is to grant conditionally subject to legal agreement. So for the reasons as set out in the report, I'm going to go around the room and ask members if they support the officer recommendation, they're against it, or they're abstaining. councillor Price?
Support the recommendation Chair.
councillor Notte?
Reluctantly support the application Chair, recommendation.
councillor Weatherall?
I support the recommendation Chair.
councillor Davison?
Against the recommendation.
councillor Woodcraft?
For the recommendation Chair.
and councillor McCann?
For the recommendation Chair.
Thank you very much. We'll just have a bit of a hiatus while Abby tallies up. Thank you. So that application is carried with five votes for and one against. Thank you very much. Our last item on the agenda today is when we quickly turn to Diana and bring her back into the room with vengeance. It's the the appeals and the summary of decisions made on the applications, on the application appeals. I, I didn't see that there was much for us to learn in there. They were mostly delegated Diana. Is there anything that you'd like to point out to the meeting?
Thank you Chair, you're right, they were all delegated decisions and nothing noteworthy. Only I would point out, I suppose, that eighty percent of the, the appeals that were submitted were dismissed.
And that's an important and good track record. Thank you very much. So the recommendation is to note this report. Can the meeting note the content of this report? Thank you. The date of the next meeting scheduled is Tuesday, the eighteenth of April, twenty twenty-three, at two P M. So thank you very much for your hard work and your contributions this afternoon to officers, members and contributors alike. And thank you for your time.